Let's start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would be happy to lead us in that.
Awesome.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Back in October of this year, we declared the mayor office vacant. And now that the election is over, our statutes will allow us to fill that vacancy. And let's see. Is there language on that? Should I just say by motion?
Just ask if anyone on the council will be able to.
So I would entertain any motions or any recommendations for an appointment to fill the vacancy for the mayor. Anyone have any idea who?
Oh, well, I would suggest Scott Hill.
Yeah, that's a great idea. So we have a motion that we appoint Scott Hill to fill the vacancy, vacated by Mayor Rick Olson. Do we have a second?
Second.
The second by Councilor Japkin. All those in favor of appointing Scott Hill to fill the vacancy for the 2000 rest of this year? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Scott, you are now the mayor. Well, almost.
Not yet.
Scott needs to promise to do his job, so.
I'm gonna let you speak in a minute. I don't know if I turned it on or not.
I think it's on now. So I think, let's do something, David. Let's go down. And I'd like to invite Ed Gormley, Rick Olson. I think it'd be really appropriate to have all of our past mayors up with us. I would also like to recognize Kent Taylor that's in the crowd with us. And these are three of the mentors that have allowed me to get to this point. So Kent, why don't you come up? Quite a group. Quite a group. So David?
So Mayor Scott Hill, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Scott Hill.
I, Scott Hill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of the office of mayor.
Perform the duties of the office of mayor.
Of the city of McMinnville.
Of the city of McMinnville.
During my continuance therein.
Of my continuance therein.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks, you guys. You moved everything for you.
Right.
That's what you call a peaceful transition of power.
Dress rehearsal for next month. If I may, thank you, council. This has been a exciting last couple of months where we really did have a campaign and had an opportunity to get out and meet people and talk. First thing that I'd like to do is first thank Kevin in the role that he took 1st of October as council president. We complicated his life. Not that he stood up and said, "I wanted that," but Kevin, thank you.
Did a little bit.
Yeah. But you've done a great job, and we appreciate your leadership and your direction to the council during that interim period. So thank you. Secondly, I mentioned mentors. And we have a community of people that have given service for a long, long time. And tonight, it was a real pleasure to have Kent come back and to recognize his leadership and his mentoring spirit. And Ed, same goes for you. You have, both of you have given everything you can give to this community, and we are in great shape because of the leadership that you provided for many, many years. Tonight, we're gonna take just a little while to recognize former Mayor Rick Olson for his service. It's exciting to have a former member of our council and the mayor at the county commissioner. And we look forward to the opportunity of building a strong partnership with the county, with Rick. And I look forward to continuing my relationship with Rick through that. And I know that McMinnville will be served very appropriately with his representation at the county level. Rick has served for 30-plus years in some form or fashion with the city of McMinnville, starting out as a volunteer fireman. And back in the day when volunteer firemen were called on a lot, and if you worked for OMI, you had a real opportunity because they would allow you to go out on many calls. And so many, many, many opportunities to serve there. Rick has served on the planning commission, has served in the community with the Chamber of Commerce. Rick has served on the city council, and he's served as mayor. And again, with his volunteer fire years, over 30 years of service to this community. And we want to take an opportunity to recognize him for that service. And so on behalf of the city council, we would like to propose that we take our fire substation, and we know we're gonna have one at some point, whether it be out Baker Creek or over by the airport at some point. But when we put a permanent substation in place, to call that the Rick Olson Substation. In the interim, we have a rented house that we have a sign out that our EMTs and ambulance services at, and that's going to become the first Rick Olson Substation, okay? With a little sign. And Rick, that is our way of just thanking you for your service. I don't think there could be a better fitting acknowledgement with you, starting out at the fire group. But at some point, as you know, we've had long discussions that we're gonna grow to that point in the near future where we're gonna need to have a permanent substation, and that will be named after your namesake. So thank you, Rick, from that perspective. What I'd like to do is have Rick come up front here. And give him an opportunity just to say a few words to the council and to those that are around us.
Gee, thank you, Scott. And you know me, I'm a person of real silence, and I usually don't have a lot to say. But first of all, I'm really humbled and proud of that honor. It was something I wasn't expecting at all. I've served McMinnville, as Scott said, over 30 years, actually. If I look at my time as volunteer fire department, it's been 38 years. But the thing about it is, it wasn't about me, and it wasn't about anything else. It was about the citizens of the city of McMinnville. And that's what I look at my real pleasure, is serving the citizens of McMinnville, which I hope to do as county commissioner when I take office in January. But my comments really want to be addressed to Mayor Gormley and to Kent Taylor, who, when I first got on the city council and Ed was looking at not running again, he kind of took me under his wing and taught me everything I needed to know about being mayor. The only thing is, he didn't teach me everything he knew, because there were certain things I had to find out on my own. But they were also my mentors, and I hope between them and what I pass down to Scott, Scott will just carry things on. But my next comments I'd really like to make to all the councilors. Over the eight years since I've been elected mayor, I've had a real honor. It's been an honor and privilege of serving with all of you. One of the things I tried to do after I was elected mayor is to change the dynamics of the council just a little bit, get more young blood, because we all know I'm not very young. And I remember the days that Larry came on, and he's not young here. But I really want to address this to Kevin and to Remy and to Adam Garvin, who's out there, who will be coming the next council, taking Larry's spot. The future of McMinnville is in your hands. And I think you have a great leader in Scott and a great leader in the senior members of the council and the staff. And all's I can do is say, "I feel very comfortable being a citizen of McMinnville." That all of you, Alan and Remy and Kevin and Kelly and Larry and then Adam and Wendy, when she gets on board, will keep carrying on what's been a tradition of McMinnville for as long as I ever could remember. So keep doing what you do. Do it well. Do it with a passion, and McMinnville will be better off. So Scott, congratulations to you.
Rick, what we'd like to do at this point is suspend our meeting for about 20 minutes. We've got some cookies back there, and just to have a little reception for you to meet with those that are here and with the council. And then we'll reconvene in about 20 minutes and go into our regularly scheduled meeting.
That's great, Scott, but where's the cookies with the red and the green?
We can't find those anymore. You know, I'd have them if I.
They're probably in your freezer.
Thank you. So we're gonna go right into a reception. Meeting back to order. Again, thank you for those that came and participated in our reception. And again, Rick, thank you so very much. It's good to have had you as our mayor and the phenomenal leadership that you provided this city as mayor and for years well beyond that. So, and again, it was so good to see Ed and Kent to be with us. Good old friends coming back around. As we move into our meeting now, I just remind that we are, these proceedings are being recorded on KLYC and MCM. And so if you have cell phones, if you'd make sure those are muted, if you need to take a call, if you could take that out to the foyer, we would appreciate that. At this point, we'll resume our meeting. And so we are at that point where an invitation to citizens for public comment. And any interested audience members are invited to provide comments. Anyone may speak on any other, any topic other than, and there's four. A topic that's already on the agenda, a matter that's in litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? I'll call again. Anyone in the audience that would be willing, would like to address the council, come up. And if you come in and sign and put your name and address and do that verbally for the record.
My name is Leif Sean Shea. And my address is 1355 Southwest Russ Lane, McMinnville, Oregon. 97128. And mine is very brief. I just wanted to say that what I've learned is to say yes and to be patient. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's probably something to learn from that. Okay. Any other individuals that would like to address the council? Hearing none? Let's go ahead, and that will take us to a public hearing tonight. And we have a public hearing on a... So we open the public hearing first, yeah. So we're gonna have a public hearing on a 2014 McMinnville Housing Rehabilitation Community Development Block Grant. And so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We have a presentation tonight. Darcy Reynolds of the Housing Rehabilitation Specialist for the county is going to be providing a PowerPoint presentation on the 2014 McMinnville Housing Rehabilitation Community Block Grant. And so Darcy, if you want to come up and give that report to us.
Good evening, council and Mayor Hill. Congratulations. I'd like to start off by saying, "I'm sorry, that's such a mouthful." All right, so I'm gonna give a summary about the project that we're completing. Can you hear me okay? And in following that, I'd like to speak to the topic of the public hearing and on behalf of the city's performance. So first off, I'd like to say thank you to all of you for participating in the grant project and working with the Yamhill County Affordable Housing Corporation and the Housing Authority of Yamhill County. Next, I'd like to kind of take you back and explain why we applied for the funds. Owners of manufactured homes and parks have been ineligible for regular rehabilitation assistance in the past because there's a requirement. Assistance has always been in the form of loans, and there's a requirement then to own the land that your home is situated on. So this has been a huge unmet need in our community for some time. And most of these households are elderly, disabled, or families with small children, and most have very low income. And therefore, they don't have the resources to make repairs, vital repairs for their home. The state announced that we could use these CDBG community block grant funds for grants for people in manufactured homes. They announced that in 2013. So upon hearing that, we immediately began working with the city of McMinnville to apply for funds. And we were successful and awarded, was awarded $400,000 in December of 2014. The goal with the funds was to assist at least 60 households with 115 people total. And we were going to only repair critical items to their home. So who did we end up helping? We were able to assist 52 households, and a total of 120 people benefited from the project. 30 of these homes, 57% were owned by elderly residents. 20 of the households, or 38%, had disabled occupants. And 15 of the households, 28% had dependent children. Here's some photos showing some of the families that we assisted. And we're willing, bless their hearts, to get their photos taken. We helped in parks throughout McMinnville. And I think we probably helped in every park in McMinnville. This kind of shows where they were distributed. And then we assisted one household in Newburgh. So these grant funds could only be used to repair immediate health or safety issues or issues that would likely be within the next 12 months. So what did we do? We fixed 13 leaking roofs, and five were able to be repaired. Some great photos of families, a couple tarps. We got rid of a lot of tarps. 20 homes had wheelchair ramps installed and/or repaired, as well as porches. That was a challenge in parks because the space is limited. And so a lot of people think that they have to be done as per the, help me, the... The certain code for handicap.
ADA.
Thank you, ADA. Impossible in the way that these parks are set up, so we really did the best that we could for the homeowners. And they had a lot of say in how we designed them and how we built them. Bathroom modifications. 13 bathrooms were modified to meet the needs of disabled or elderly homeowners. These modifications were typically replacing tubs with walk-in showers, installing taller toilets, and installing grab bars. This top-left picture, those horrible garden tubs that are in these manufactured homes, back when, one day, they were probably glorious, but almost impossible, if you could imagine, for a senior or disabled person to get in and out of. So we did a lot of these walk-in showers. Lot of plumbing repairs. 18 homes had leaking plumbing fixtures or plumbing pipes and whatnot repaired or replaced. These included tubs, showers, toilets, and water heaters. The picture, the one on the left, shows water damage that was done from a leaking shower. And the one next to it is the shower replaced in the floor afterwards. One of my favorite photos here is the duct taped tub. And that was replaced with the unit there below. Lots of these kind of repairs. 10 homes had electrical hazards that were repaired. Examples include faulty wiring, outlets, switches, breakers, and light fixtures. And here's a few pictures of some examples of some of the stuff we repaired. Water damage really seemed to be the theme of this project. 32 homes had serious water damage, dry rotten mold that was repaired. In addition, five homes had ventilation systems installed. That number's not real big because we partner with YCAP, and they love to do fans, so they assisted a lot of households with that. Here's some good examples of the kind of water damage we dealt with. A lot from leaking roofs, leaking windows, the mildew that resulted from that. Lots of siding. The siding on these homes, if it's not just immaculately maintained, it just push. 15 homes had broken or defective windows and doors replaced. Here's an example of a woman we helped. She had leaking windows, dry rot on all the windows, mildew just profound. The minute you walked in her house, you were just hit by mildew. So we fixed all, we replaced all her windows and doors, and she needed to actually have some rotten flooring redone and a lot of mildew. Again, typical of the other homes that we did the windows and doors with. So the ongoing need to sustain or replace this kind of housing. Some may question, and I used to, is it logical to spend this kind of money on these homes that are probably worth less than you're actually putting into them? Economically speaking, no. But the problem is, is there's no other affordable housing for this population until we do figure out answers to that. Absolutely, we need to try to sustain it. So I put together this chart to give you an example of, this is a summary of the households we served with this project. And 30% of them had income below the first column, extremely low income limits. 45% had income below the middle column, the very low income limits, and 25 had income lower than the low income limits. So what can they afford? What is affordable rent? HUD defines affordable rent as when occupants are paying no more than 30% of their income for gross housing costs, including utilities. So 30% of your income is going towards your rent, your mortgage, and/or, and your utilities. So I tried to give a visual for what that means for this population. And I highlighted on the table on the left, an example for a one-person household. So those that have extremely low income, and I use the income, the high income limit, so a lot of these folks are actually lower than this. So people at that extremely low income limit, $385 for rent and utilities. Very low income, $643. And the low income, $1,028. And again, this is what they can afford for both rent and utilities. So the table on the right shows what our county's fair market rents are. And what the fair market rent, what that means is, it's what HUD has determined is fair rents based on average rents in the area. So the table on the right is based on unit size, was fair per unit size. The table on the left is household income by household size. So a one-person household, for instance, might be able to find a studio apartment, there's not many available in the community, at a rent of $946 gross rent. And you'll see, there's such a huge disparity between what they can actually afford. And it gets even wider when you look at the one-bedroom. So where they're being housed now, the average rents for a space pad is 500. So I'm trying to kind of illustrate here that it's truly, right now, the only affordable housing option for these folks until something other is created. And I don't want to, sometimes I just, because they talk about affordable housing being built, which is really apartments that are being rented for the fair market rent. So affordable in some respects, but for these low-income folks, not at all. So what this calls for, you know, we have a critical need to create housing that's subsidized, not affordable, subsidized based on income. And this population is so vulnerable to displacement, and some of the homes and the repairs that were needed, they are literally unsafe to live in. And one step away from either becoming very ill or simply having to move. So what are we doing and what will we continue to do? We continue to explore new and innovative ideas in the arena of affordable subsidized housing. We'll also continue to partner with our local governments and agencies to research and develop more affordable housing options. And in fact, we are working with the city of Newburgh, and we were just awarded a grant. We'll be doing the same kind of project up there. And finally, we will continue our work to help stabilize these low-income and extremely low-income families until more permanent affordable housing solutions can be found. So I want to thank you again for participating. That's my favorite photo right there, so they made the last page. And then I'd like to, if I could, speak to the topic of the public housing and the city's performance. So my experience working with the city during this project was outstanding. The city's staff met the multitude of project requirements timely and accurately, and we're all very pleasant to work with. The city also performed very well during the state audit, and we had no performance findings. And then I wanted to give special recognition and thanks to the following officials. Former Mayor Rick Olson and the council for supporting the grant. Former director, planning director, excuse me, Doug Montgomery, and principal planning, Ron Pomeroy, for assuming the role of certifying officer. This involved acting as a central point of contact for the grant, reviewing and signing off on all the site-specific environmental reviews, as well as various policies and contractual documents, working directly with the state during the course of the project. And also for participation in the, they both act on the board, the Yamhill County Affordable Housing Corporation Board, and we appreciate that. They were the ones that every file had to be approved, so I'd have to run in there and interrupt their day. So a great thank you to both of them. Candace, for all of your help at the beginning. Candace, for all of your help at the beginning, reviewing the legal contracts. Marcia Bargary, who I don't think is here tonight, for reviewing and signing all the draw requests, turning over reimbursement checks quickly, and for participating in the audit. And Rose Lorenzen, for her assistance with the initial public hearing and various other administrative requirements required to submit the grant, and for providing city employment policies and information for the audit. And I'd also like to thank Melissa for her help for this presentation. And finally, Sarah Sullivan and Katie Land, who work at the planning department, because I constantly was interrupting their days, so. Anyway, thank you very much, it's been a pleasure.
Any questions for Darcy?
Sorry, Mayor?
Go ahead, Alan.
Uh, Darcy, thank you, that was very educational. Uh, the question I had was on subsidizing these affordable homes. Is there anything besides Section 8 that you're aware of, the state Section 8?
Well, there are some properties that are funded by rural development.
Is that a state agency or...?
They're actually, those are private, they're properties that are subsidized.
Okay.
So the people, and we have all that information at the office, so people can approach those individual complexes and apply, and those rents are based on income. Section 8...
That farmworker, that farmworker housing?
Yes, yes. And we have all the information for all those properties as well. And I just can't think of anything else. We're starting, Elise and I had a conversation with, oh, Rick from Community Build, what's his last name? And we're tossing around the idea and thought, because rural development has mortgage loans that are subsidized, your payment is subsidized based on your income? And, you know, what would it look like if maybe a nonprofit owned the land, the mobile home parks, nonprofit, and maybe, not maybe the best answer, but if the people could get funding, financing to put a new home on it, that mortgage payment is based on, you know, it's another version of subsidized. So that's kind of what I mean by ideas. They're out there, it's just figuring out the best solution for our area.
Thank you. And one other quick question on the application process for these properties. Did they come to you, or, okay?
Yeah.
So is there a list, and there's, is there a future grant possibility?
Oh, absolutely, and thanks for mentioning that. So, we can only do one CDVD grant in the region at a time, so I'm doing one in Newburgh. I'd like them to come back after we're done with that, because applications continue to flood in, and we have right now two hundred and twenty-five people on, families on the waitlist.
Wow.
Yeah, and they, you know, the more you, projects you do, the more word gets out, and the need is huge.
Is that county, the two hundred on the waiting list?
Yeah, that's county.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Remy, Kevin? So the next opportunity would be two thousand and nineteen, two years from what you've just done in Newburgh?
Unless we get the Newburgh one done quicker. These are faster, normally we do loans, home equity line loans, and administering these, although we do a lot more houses, seems to be a lot quicker. So I'll certainly try to wrap that up sooner.
Well, I, I just think on behalf of the council, with this report, I would think that we would be interested in sponsoring again. It's an area where it's not going to make too much of a dent into our affordable housing, what we're trying to do, but as you say, there are needs out there, and we, you can, with very little, make the quality of life for people much better, safer. I, I think we'd be very interested in partnering again as soon as those funds become available.
And one thing too, I forgot to mention, we, with this funding, we couldn't help homes that were built in seventy-seven or prior. We just applied for funding through the Meyer Memorial Trust Foundation to target those families. And most of our waitlists, honestly, just because of, you know, where people live, it's mainly Newburgh and McMinnville, because that's where the parks are. So that might be a possibility to do some assistance before two thousand and nineteen.
Good. Well, thank you for the presentation, thank you for the partnership.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to share their views about the two thousand fourteen Community Development Housing Rehabilitation Grant Program? Not seeing any, then we will conclude our testimony and close the public hearing. Okay, before us right now is our consent agenda, and so, are there any councilors or members in the audience that would request to have an item removed from the consent agenda and be heard at the regular place in our agenda?
Um, yes, please, Mr. Mayor, I need to ask to call up the agenda item, request by Project Unproduction for new liquor license at two three oh three Northeast Orchard Avenue, just in order to recuse myself of that decision.
Okay. Any other requests? Okay, I asked for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I so moved.
So it has been, um...
Did you want the item made from the consent agenda?
I don't need to pull it, I just need to recuse myself.
Recuse yourself. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so Kelly Minkie has moved, and Kevin Jeffries has seconded it. Those in favor may signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. The consent agenda has passed unanimously in favor. Okay? We are now to appoint in our present, in our meeting, that we have an opening in our planning, on our planning commission, and there are four applications for Ward One on the planning commission. And so we've got four individuals, and I'm probably going to slaughter a couple of the names, so bear with me. Lori Shonche, okay Lori, Darren Kosluskas.
Klosk.
Kosluskas. Okay, now you're, we're gonna go by first names moving forward, okay? Aaron Butler and Aaron Williams. Okay, so we've got you four. And so, let me just share with the audience and for the benefit of the council, we have given five questions to each of our applicants before tonight, so they know the questions that we're going to ask, so they've had an opportunity to prepare. We are excited to have four qualified individuals that have come before us tonight, well-qualified, but we only need one, so we, we go through a process. I can tell you straightforward, we're not here to put you through much, just feel at ease as you go through this process, because we're excited to have you here. I, so I think that's where we're at at this point. So what I'd ask you to do is, we're gonna start with, Laura, if you'd come, if you'd come up front, the other three, if you'd go out in the foyer, so you're not gonna hear the answers.
I can hear this project.
Okay, so where would we...
Can we put them in the conference room?
Conference room? If, Mike, if you can...
I can do it, because I need to recuse myself.
Okay.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this as well, so I'm happy to show them to the conference.
Okay, great, so Mike, uh...
I saw you were high-key.
Were the questions, so, okay. It looks like we may only have three individuals here tonight. Okay, we'll make sure that everything's squared away before we start the process. Again, Lori, it's good to have you up front, just feel at ease with us, okay? You know, and it's a back-and-forth process. But I think we're gonna start with Larry, if you would start the questioning of the interviewing tonight.
Okay. Do you have the questions? What happened to them?
Seventy-six.
Oh, I went the wrong way, no wonder I can't find them. See, we have as much friends as you're gonna have, so.
Okay, okay, go ahead, Larry. We'll just, I'll just start with question number one. What are those qualities that you value most about the McMinnville community?
Thank you, Councilman Yoder, and through the chair. I moved here very recently, I bought a house in January of two thousand and fifteen with my husband, and we looked all over Oregon before we chose a place. The things I love about McMinnville are the fact that it's got a great downtown. In fact, it's one of the few towns that doesn't have the highway running through it, which, you know, for planners is huge, and I'm a landscape architect, so I kind of go along the same way. It's separated, so the downtown's separated from the highway, we have a walkable community, which is, which is great. I love the parks, and I'm a block from the West Side Trail. I, I'm just really, really impressed with the town in general. I'm from Anchorage, Alaska, I've lived there for thirty years, and, and we always had troubles maintaining things and keeping things up, so I'm really thrilled with McMinnville. And one of the also big things is it's got a great economy, and it's not a bedroom community, which I think is really important, it's its own town. So thank you.
Okay, Lori, um, let's see. McMinnville prides itself on being a mid-sized Oregon city with a small-town feel. What do you see as the top three land use concerns that face McMinnville now and in the future?
Well, Councilman Minkie, and through the chair, I, I think one of the big things coming up is the whole urban growth boundary. That's going to be really tricky. It sounds like a lot of work has been done, and we're still waiting for the state to kind of catch up, so I, I can see that happening. I, I like the fact that there's some new development coming in, especially with the Northeast Plan, and it's mixed-use, which I think is really important in a town, that you've got mixed-use residential, commercial, and business, and also for employment. It really helps make things sustainable. I, I think those are a couple of things that will be coming up. Plus, I think with new development, you know, there's the, the new one down on, on Hill Road, the fact that we don't want McMinnville to become a bedroom community. So I, I think it's, it's important, from finding homes for people with not a lot of money and just housing people we've got here, it's, it's very important.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Uh, to follow up on, on the previous question, what skills or experiences would you bring to the commission that would be helpful in addressing those possible future concerns?
Counselor Jeffries, I have twenty-five years' experience at the municipality of Anchorage, so basically I have a really good technical background as a landscape architect. I've written a couple of plans already with, at the municipality with, with an assistant, the pedestrian plan and a bicycle plan. It was the first bicycle plan we had in Anchorage. So I, I think my work doing that, I was the non-motorized transportation coordinator, so it's really important to me that we have safe places to walk and that, that people are safe, and I feel that my skills are, would be really helpful, and my training.
Can I have a follow-up question?
Sure.
When doing these plans, proposing these plans in, in Anchorage, did you ever have community pushback about any of the, can you just tell us a little bit about how you handled that?
Yes, there was a lot of pushback. One of the things in Anchorage, you know, it's the last frontier, and people feel that the right-of-way is all theirs, so putting a sidewalk in is a very, very difficult project. I had one project where we, we managed to get a sidewalk in after this neighborhood had refused it about eight years earlier, and I had a team of two other landscape architects helping me, and we just really worked with every property owner and made sure that their property was taken care of, like, we, we just spent a lot of time, and we finally got a sidewalk in. So yes, there are many, many things that people, people tend to not like change, so that can be very difficult.
Thank you. Thank you. Ellen?
First of all, Lori, thank you for your application.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, as a council, we all do. So you talked a little bit about it as a planning commission, you have the criteria that's been legally made, and there's a legal point towards the decision, and the hearing room is full of concerned citizens that point you in the opposite direction. How would you manage that situation and reach a recommendation or decision?
Well, it's, it's really tricky when you're dealing with land use and codes, because unless McMinnville's different, I believe that the planning commission is, is pretty much bound by the code. So just because people don't like certain things, we can't necessarily change the code. I, I think the council and the mayor have the power to do that. Basically, we need to listen, and we need to try and understand and emphasize with people, and explain the best way to move forward, and try and, try and find some compromises. I have been in situations where the planning commission commissioners in Anchorage would put together committees to, to help everyone understand it and work through the process. So I, I think that's those ways, but, but sometimes things that are law are not the most popular, so.
Cooperation.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. And our last question is, why should we appoint you to be a part of our planning commission at this time?
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, my background, my special technical skills, and the fact that I'm a new resident, I'm, I'm very excited to be living here and to be part of the community. I'm also retired, so I don't have a lot to do right now. My kids moved in with me, so I'm trying to find other things to do, and, and I, you can understand that.
Well, many of us up on this panel are retired, we know that process, and, and our opportunities up here give us some time to, or some opportunities fill our time also. Any questions that you might have of us?
Um, well, let's see, you've just been appointed, Mr. Mayor, how many years are you in for, in for?
Uh, at, starting in January for four years.
Oh, great.
So it's a four-year term for the council, and so Kelly will be in for another four years, she's just finishing up twelve-plus years, so we've got some longevity, and we have some new faces coming on board, so just a really good mixture on the council.
That's great. I, I don't have any other questions, but thank you very much for your time.
Okay.
It's a pleasure meeting you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And you can go ahead and stay in the audience.
Oh, thank you.
Darren, next?
Go ahead. I don't, I don't want to take much of your guys' time, I just wanted to elaborate on one thing. She was being rather modest. I played football at South Anchorage High School, and as she said, she handled a lot of opposition. I broke my knee twice in, in one season while playing on the, the playing field, there's rocks, there's dirt, there's holes in every single crevice, and she fought, and for four years she fought with my coach and, and with, you know, my friends' parents and whoever she could find, really, and, and there was so much opposition around the neighboring community that she, she went to every single one of these meetings, and I would show up with her. And, you know, I, I moved in with her, and I've been patient, and she came with me to Denver, and I have accepted a job with the Colorado Avalanche, and, and so I decided to come here with her, and, and she's the most amazing person I've ever had in my life, and she deserves to be with you guys right here.
Thank you for the added insight.
Thank you.
Darren? Darren, what we're gonna do is, we have sent you the five questions, and we'll start with our councilors and just ask those, probably starting with one through five, and, and just go from that perspective. Again, Larry, we'll start with you.
Okay. Glad to have you here. Question number one, what are those qualities that you value most about the McMinnville community?
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. The qualities I like the, the most is...
Uh, the qualities I like the, the most is, I think McMinnville's a casual town. It is comfortable. There's no drama, uh, it's friendly, there's a sense of community. I love its location, the activities that are available to its citizens. I just find it's a great town to be part of. Just like I said, it feels good to be here.
Kelly?
Darren? McMinnville prides itself on being a mid-sized Oregon city with a small-town feel. What do you see as the top three land use concerns that face McMinnville now and in the future?
Uh, what I see are the top three land use concerns is housing. Darcy mentioned it earlier, but I think that, uh, we're gonna become eventually a commuter town where the people who live here don't work here. They're, they're going elsewhere. And as communities continue to build outside of us and growth comes our way, housing is gonna become scarcer and scarcer. Prices are gonna go up. Finding zoning and, um, starting to think about now, where are the right places to put higher-density housing? And then retail that's down around them, that also cuts down on the commuting traffic and so forth, is important. Along with doing that is thinking ahead. My concern is for, uh, the infrastructure that supports that. Are we looking far enough ahead? Are we zoning for it? Are we planning for it? And then with the, uh, industrial area, are we using, is it being proactively marketed quickly enough to be used in a timely fashion? Or should we start looking at using it in a different way?
Thank you.
Kevin?
Um, as a follow-up to that previous question, what skills or experiences would you bring to the commission that would be helpful in addressing those concerns, those future concerns that you had mentioned?
Uh, yeah, I'm probably a little bit different than the rest of the people that are here. I'm kinda new to this. And somebody said there was an opening, and I'm here to help. Having been in the Marine Corps for 22 years, it's all about service. So now that I've established myself in the, in the community, I'm, I'm here to serve. So I'm here to be a loyal entity. If it means gnashing through data to find the right, right information or different reports, that's what I bring to it, to gnash it and make sure that I help make this a better place. Alright, thanks.
Ellen?
Darren, thank you for applying. Could you pronounce your last name again? It's an, it's an amazing name. You just gotta roll off the tongue.
Kuz-Loskus. Kuz-Loskus.
Loskus.
Or just K-9. K plus nine letters.
I see you've applied for the Airport Commission also.
Like I said, I'm here to serve.
Your, uh, Marine Corps experiences got you interested in aviation and associated things. 2,000 flight hours, a helicopter, and fixed weapons?
I flew Cobras for many years.
Okay.
From the Marine Corps.
Good. Uh, the question I have for you is a big one. It's been presented to every candidate. Is that, um, when there's a legal point of view concerning the criteria of a decision that needs to be made on a land use issue, and the hearing is full of concerned citizens, and they, they have a loud voice, and they're going the opposite direction of the recommendation, how do you handle that? And what's the best tact or feelings that you'd have?
Naturally, if there's a, an ordinance or a law that's directing us to do something, we have to abide by that. So first, helping, you know, one, listen to the concerns, provide education, and then with our knowledge of the laws and the ordinances, where maybe there are some options available to them that might help find, maybe not a full win-win, but at least maybe lessen the sting of whatever their concern is. So that's what I would try to find, is more of a, you know, like I said, you gotta listen to what the concern is, 'cause maybe they're seeing a point that we're unaware of. But once it's discovered that, yes, we hear your concern, this is the direction we have to go by ordinance, here are some options available to you, that's what I would try to do. But I, making a decision has never been a, a problem for me, if that's what needs to happen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And then Darren, the last question that we have for you is why should we appoint you to the Planning Commission at this time?
'Cause I'm dedicated and loyal to the city. You know, I've talked to some of your other candidates, and you have some other great candidates too. I'm just here to help. And, uh, you know, my feelings won't be hurt. I'm just, like I said, if you need help, I'm here to help. So...
Mayor, could I ask one more question? How are you with numbers?
Uh, I love crunching numbers. I, you know, when I, one of my jobs in the Marine Corps was the Director of Marketing and Advertising for the Marine Corps. Had $137 million budget, and when I left, it was $47 million shorter, and still doing the same job. Uh, I did that through lean processes, evaluation, and data analysis of different things we did. Before that, Marine Corps recruiting. I was looking at population density maps, income maps, where the population was shifting, so I could figure out where I needed to put offices. So crunching numbers, looking at data, it's all trying to find the truth of what needs to be done.
Thank you very much, Darren.
Yes, ma'am. Let's open it up for any questions you might have of us.
What would you want me to accomplish in my first six months?
Anyone like to address that?
Get to know the community, for one thing, for sure. Get the pulse of it. You've been here almost three years.
Yes, sir.
You probably have somewhat, and that's why you're applying. But, uh, I guess getting to know the, the makeup of all the community members and, you know, just the whole mix of everything.
I, I, I think Oregon has some unique, uh, land use laws, and understanding the law and, and the regulations that go around that. I think as importantly, and I think Ellen touched on that, is becoming a team member. It's, it's interesting that the Planning Commission, uh, works on our behalf and does a lot of the legwork in this very complicated area. And then it comes to us to make those final decisions. And some of the hardest decisions I think we've had to make as a city council comes from things that have been in the, at the Planning Commission. And we really put a lot of, um, a trust in our Planning Commission to do a, a kind of a due diligence and to represent the law well. Because we, we're, we've got our fingers in so many other things. And so I, I can tell you right now that each of our committees serve a purpose. But this is one purpose that really helps us, probably outside of the council, the next most time-consuming responsibility that our volunteers would have. So that would be my take. Any other thoughts? We've got a few that have been on the Planning Commission, on, on city councils, so they've been through that process.
We really listen to you, or the, the Planning Commission. They have a tremendous impact on what we make, decisions we make.
Well, if I can be of help, I'd be honored. If not, I wish you luck with your selection.
Well, go ahead and have a seat in the audience and, and stay with us. And, uh, Remy, Aaron, if, uh...
And I'd like to thank Laura for not heckling me. Thank you all. Thank you.
Who's next? Which area are we getting there? Darren, welcome.
Hello. Thank you.
Good to have you in front of us.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, as we mentioned, we've sent some questions to you. We're not gonna deviate from that. And so we'll start with Mr. Yoder, Larry, if you'll start us out, and, uh, we'll just work our way through.
Okay, sounds good.
Welcome, Erin.
Hi, thank you.
Uh, question number one: What are those qualities that you value most about the McMinnville community?
Um, so I moved here a year ago from Portland. Um, and I mainly was just moving closer to the wine industry in general. And so there were, you know, a few towns that you could choose from. Um, and McMinnville was, you know, hands-down, just, I loved it. It's sort of the quality of life, the walkability, I mean, everything that, uh, McMinnville prides itself on being a mid-sized Oregon city with a small-town feel. Like, I love that. So, um, the cultural events, um, I lo, I absolutely adore UFO Days, and the Dragging the Gut Festival is a personal favorite. Um, and I just think stuff like that is really great.
Here.
Erin?
Yes, ma'am.
Glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you.
McMinnville prides itself on being a mid-sized Oregon city with a small-town feel. What do you see as the top three land use concerns that face McMinnville now and in the future?
Um, so one of the things that I noticed when I first moved here, um, I have a lot of young friends who, um, you know, they're in their early twenties. You know, they're working hard, um, and they all, they can't find places to live, or where they do live is just very expensive. So, um, that kind of, that would be, you know, my main concern. And I appreciated, you know, the presentation earlier this evening, um, touching on that. And then I guess, you know, there is kind of a spotlight on McMinnville right now. I think outside of Oregon even, with lots of money, um, especially in the wine industry, Jackson family, uh, wines coming in. And there's going to be a lot of development, and it's gonna be a tourist destination. But there, it's important to take care of the, the people who actually live here. So, um, I find that a, something to, you know, keep an eye on. And, uh, structures that are being built, you know, are they affordable for the people who live here? Are they affordable for, like, you know, second homes? You know, stuff like that. Um, and then probably, it's a personal concern, but it's, uh, being bicycle and pedestrian-friendly. So, um, gotta have places to lock up your bike outside the Bittermunk.
Thank you.
Any other?
Thank you for your...
Let's move to Kevin.
Yes, um, what skills do you have that would help you address some of the issues that you, you had mentioned?
Um, well, I have, um, I was a public school teacher for eight years. And in that, you're a lot of times, um, trying to be diplomatic and tactful with maybe an angry parent or an angry student. So, kind of, just listening to the concerns and hearing them, before, you know, lay down your long arm of the law or whatever. So there's that. I was on the Board of the Directors for the Portland Friends of the Library. So have some experience, you know, being on a board, sitting with people in a group about, and kind of navigating, um, complicated situations. So I was on the board during the, when they were trying to get a district for the library instead of doing a levy, um, every year. So, uh, just being a part of that, uh, group dynamics would be helpful, I think. And I also have lived, um, in many cities throughout the United States and throughout the world. And I feel like I notice or appreciate, you know, what makes that community special or, or what it is. Like, why do you enjoy living there, or why do you not enjoy living there? So...
Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen?
Thank you, Mayor. Erin, thank you for applying.
Thank you for having me.
It's always a treat to have people apply for these committees.
Yeah, for sure.
And commissions. As a planning commission, our commissioner, there's a, there's a key word called criteria.
Okay.
All right? And so, uh, in land use issues, it's called criteria. It's probably similar to what the criteria is for making fine wine. Don't follow a certain set of rules, it doesn't work out, right?
Absolutely.
So a lot of times, there's a, uh, the criteria points to a certain decision that you've got to make. And then, so that's one, uh, direction. The other direction is listening to the audience who may be out there expressing an opposite point of view.
Yeah.
And how would you, um, manage that situation when the, when half the room is against a certain direction that the Planning Commission is gonna be going?
Um, well, I think the key thing to do is to listen to the concerns that are being voiced. And then if you hear them, you make your explanation of the criteria in a way that addresses what it, the concerns that are being raised. So you have to listen to the person, the, or people. And I mean, if it, if it's a, it's a legal thing, you know, there's no way around it, right? For the criteria. So you have to explain or help people to understand why the criteria is the way that they, is the way it is, and answer and, and direct their concerns based on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, Erin, we're gonna end up with, why should we appoint you to the Planning Commission at this time? So an opportunity for you to kind of toot your, your, your desires and to be on the commission.
Um, honestly, I am just very motivated and jazzed about this community. And I want to serve it. I wanna be a part of this, the spirit that I love about it. So I don't, that's all the tooting.
Good. We, we understand that, 'cause we feel the same thing. That's why we enjoy it.
Yeah.
At this point, let's, uh, give you an opportunity to ask us any questions that you might have of us.
Um, sure. What is, can you tell me about a difficult situation that the Planning Committee has dealt with recently?
Anyone like to take that?
Well, where's Wendy Stassen's right now?
What'd you say?
Right there.
We have our Chair of the Planning Commission there that's coming on to the, onto the council, but...
I remember one that, that we all had to deal with, actually. So oftentimes, if it's, if there's no objection, the issue gets resolved at the Planning Commission level. But the opponents can always appeal, or the applicants can appeal the decision to the council to have to make a final decision on. And I, there was, uh, the development for the Habitat for Humanity on the other side of, over on, on Three Mile Lane. That didn't go through the Planning Commission. That went through the Planning Commission, but it didn't pass unanimously. And there was, there was an applicant, the opposition to the application that, that wanted us to make a final decision on it. And that was actually split 50/50 amongst the council. We all couldn't decide on it either. And in that case, the mayor had to break the tie.
Okay.
And he broke the tie, uh, in favor of, of the development. And, um, you know, that one, that one was really tough. And, and in fact, after we did the, uh, our decision on it, it was then appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals with the state. And, um, so when Ellen was talking about criteria, that's why it's so important that as a commissioner, you express your opinions really clearly, 'cause that gets put into the record. And that the, the criteria in which you're basing your decision on is, is very well-defined, so that when it goes to the Land Use Board of Appeal, it's upheld. You know, really knowing the laws and knowing the, the foundations upon which you're basing your decision is really, really important. And, and, you know, there's staff that help articulate those foundations for you. But, you know, as a coun, as a commission, you have to make your decisions based on those criteria.
They're very emotional.
Yeah, and that one in particular was because it was, I mean, you're, you're dealing with neighborhoods. None of this is gonna happen in somebody else's backyard that no one cares about. This is all happening right here within the city.
Yeah.
And passions will, will just, will go through the roof. And, I mean, as an educator, I'm sure you've sat across the table with angry parents, and it's just the same thing, like, and you're, and I, I used to teach as well. So it's like, there's laws involved in, like, setting up individual education plans and stuff. You have to base these decisions on, on the laws in front of you and, and not on your, on your emotions.
For sure. Yeah.
So if you mess it up, we'll have to clean it up. So, um... That's how it goes.
And we, we'll do it, but we don't enjoy that usually.
Sometimes if you don't mess it up, we still have to clean it up. So...
Any other questions?
No, I don't think so.
Well, thank you, Erin.
Thank you. Well, actually, I do. Can I borrow a pen?
Isn't there one at the table?
There is. There isn't. Thank you. Okay, no, I'm done, thank you, very much.
And then, you go ahead as, as you've finished, and you just have a seat, and we'll, we'll have the opportunity now to deliberate between the councilors. So, at this point, let's have a discussion, we've got three, well, let me do one other thing, is Erin Williams in the group? Okay, so we have three candidates for the open position of Ward One on the planning commission, and I'll just go ahead and open for discussion among the council members.
I think it's delightful to see such a nice group of candidates.
Absolutely.
Of course, I'm coveting one of them for the budget committee, so what can I say?
I wrote that down, that guy.
We all figured it out.
Probably sides.
So, I, I think what I'll do is, Alan, any, any thoughts that you'd like to get on the table as we discuss?
First of all, congratulations to all three of them, I know we've said it before, but it's, it's great, it keeps us going and provides us energy to see such volunteerism in our community, we really, really appreciate it, I think everybody just feels the same way. It seems like, as far as the way of experience that goes, that Lori would have a slight edge on her experience as far as being a planning commissioner and what she's done in the past. And so, I guess I'll open it up with that, yeah.
Okay. Kevin, any thoughts initially?
Um, yeah, I liked them all, I liked their spirit, and, and I, I think Lori definitely has an edge, given her experience in the, in the past, but also Erin's work with the Portland Library Board, Portland is, they don't, nothing goes down without a fight in Portland, I mean, it's just, so that, that really is something to consider as well. But I think, looking forward at the challenges that we have in front of us as a city, and with the limited amount of land we have, and some pretty heavy land use decisions we have ahead of us, I think I'm, I'm a little bit more comfortable with Lori right now, just based on her experience, I think that's kind of what the planning commission needs right now.
Okay. I'm gonna jump down to Larry.
Yeah, my, my assessment would be, I really, I like Lori for her knowledge and her experience, I think that's very critical. I like Darren for his enthusiasm and his drive to want to be there, and I like Erin for her passion and her ability to listen. So, you know, I mean, that passion, maybe not the experience in planning and things, but that passion that she showed for the city, and then knowing that she, in her past, has had to be a good listener and arbitrator at times, appeals to me, too. So, I don't, at this point, have a favorite, but we need Lori's knowledge, we need Erin's passion, and that's where I'm at.
Okay. Kelly?
Well, as I look at this, I must say that Lori does probably have the stronger experience, and probably education, too. But I happen to know that there's probably gonna be at least one-at-large position coming up very soon on the planning commission, and then there's a Ward Two position, and I don't know if any of you qualify in Ward Two. So, with that in mind, plus there's always the budget committee, I personally would feel that Lori might be my choice for tonight.
Any further comments?
Just that Erin impressed me because she's, she's jazzed on McMinnville, I think is the word, I've never heard that before, but it's, oh, she's jazzed on McMinnville, they really like it, I think, so, that's, that's a plus. You know, another thing is, we've talked about before, is there are other commissions, there are other committees to be on, and I know Kelly, you know, she's always got numbers in her head.
Oh, look, I'm coveting your airport commissioners.
But I like, I like Darren a lot, and not just his last name, but his enthusiasm, his willingness to serve in other areas, such as the airport commission, that's just, that's just a great thing.
Great. Well, let me just share a couple of thoughts that I might have. I don't know that we've got, we've had this type of quality individuals in front of us for quite a while. Let me give you a statistic, we have 210 full-time employees within the city of McMinnville. We have over 1,300 volunteers in the city of McMinnville. So, when you talk about the uniqueness of this community, when you talk about, you know, the spirit of this community, it's all about the volunteers, whether it starts here at the council, and many of our volunteers are those that are coaches with the, with the baseball and the soccer, and if you've not had an opportunity to be out at Joe Dancer Park during the summertime, we've got 20 games going on at the same time, no place to park, and it's all volunteer-driven. I like that, and, and so, I'll tell you right now, you each have a passion to give back to the community. We have a passion to give back to the community, or we wouldn't be here. We have fun in what we do, because if it weren't, if it weren't fun, we wouldn't be doing what we're doing, too. And so, I think Alan hit it right on the head, we're gonna have an opportunity to pick one individual tonight, but we can see each of you serving in some form or fashion with us at the city. And I don't know that, I will rest unless, until we find that right place for you guys to serve, each and every one of you, and we want to engage you. We want you to become a part of that, that, that group that has the passion, that gives back to you in a meaningful way, more than we give. Okay, that's, that's where we're at, and so, those are my thoughts initially, and so, we're to a point right now where I'll ask for a motion to appoint one of the candidates to the planning commission.
I'd like to make a motion
Okay, Alan.
That we appoint Lori
Okay.
To be the next planning, or the planning commissioner from Ward One.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And any further discussion? Okay, it has been moved by Alan and seconded by Kelly, those in favor may signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
So, the, the, by resolution, and we're looking at Resolution 2016.89, Lori, we've got it up here somewhere, Shonshiel? Close enough? Okay, has, has, it's been unanimously approved that you will serve on the planning commission, and so, congratulations. Now, with that being said, we are aware of a opportunity for one-at-large, Darren and Erin, one-at-large on the planning commission coming up within the next month, month and a half, we hope.
Yeah, actually, it should be advertised in the newspaper this Friday, so
Okay, this Friday. Okay, so there's gonna be another opportunity at-large, and Darren, again, if, if, if the thought of budget committee is something that is intriguing to you, talk to Kelly or myself, we love the budget committee, well, the whole council loves it, but we really love it.
We really love it.
And, and, and again, the uniqueness of the budget committee, if you like numbers, is it, it tells the story of the city, because it's how we spend money. So, just a thought, and again, not to share where we would want you to be, that's where your desires are. So, again, all three, thank you, we expect to see you back or talking to us, because we want to engage you in the process. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to resolutions, Resolution Number 2016-90, a resolution appointing and reappointing members of various boards, committees, commissions, and task force. Melissa, I'm gonna turn this over to you to kind of give us a rundown of, of the various committees and where we sit, and who are up for reappointment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, I provided each of the council members at the dais with an updated resolution and memo, removing the reappointment of Chris Stubberfield from the budget committee, I spoke with him yesterday, and he decided not to seek reappointment, so we now have four vacancies on the budget committee. The appointments that we'll be considering this evening include Chris McLaren and Alan Rudin for three-year terms to the Affordable Housing Task Force, Chris will replace Cheryl Hill, and Alan is a reappointment. Rob Stevenson and Rose Marie Car, Karen? Hawkrin? For three-year terms to the Landscape Review Committee, these are both reappointments. Mary Beth Branch and Corey Scott, these are new appointments to the Historic Landmarks Committee, Heather discussed these earlier during the dinner meeting. And so, Mary Beth Branch's term will be for four years, and Corey Scott will be expiring December 31st, 2017. Then we have Doug Hurl and John Lautenbach, and those are four-year terms to the Airport Commission, and both are reappointments. And then we have a four-year term to the Water and Light Commission for Tom Tankersley, and this is actually a mayoral appointment, so the mayor makes this appointment.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Any discussions around the names that have been presented? I think those individuals are all familiar to us.
I know that Chris has served a long time on the budget
He has.
Chris Stubberfield has served a long time, and his dad just passed away just recently, too.
Yeah, I, I, I was trying to think today, Chris, somewhere between 20 and 15 years on the budget committee.
Really?
A little sorry to see him, to leave that, but again, it gives us an opportunity to do some recruiting. Any other discussion? I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the resolution as it stands.
So moved.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Kevin Jeffries and seconded by Alan Rudin. Those in favor may signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously with six in favor. Okay, Resolution 2016-91, a resolution approving a task order number four to the Personal Services Contract for the design of Fifth Street and Alpine Avenue Transportation Bond Measure Project. So, we'll turn to Mike for a report on, on this resolution.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, I'd refer you to the brief memo, as well as the draft resolution and proposed contract task order that is in your packet, this is related to the Alpine Avenue Transportation Bond Measure Project, and deals with change in design services to deal with costs that weren't in the previously approved scope of work, including costs related to the Trellis Foundation designs, some work we're doing for Water and Light related to water and power conduits that'll be done as part of the project, those costs will be reimbursed by McMinnville Water and Light. It also includes costs to rebid the project, as you know, our first attempt at bidding was over budget, we're repackaging the project to fit within contract, or construction budget, this covers design time related to the rebid process, and also includes construction services, so that when we bring back a contract for you that's within budget, we'll have construction services assistance by the design team, so. I've also provided a brief schedule update for you, which indicates we'll be out to bid the very first part of January, and anticipate bringing a contract for construction back to you in February. So, unless there are any questions, I'd recommend that the council adopt the resolution approving this task order with HDR, and with that, I'd answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mike from, from the council? Alan?
Mike, I just got one, just for edification and knowledge about the bidding process, when you have to go out for rebids, what, what does that cost roughly for the city, the city's part to do that? Is there a rule of thumb on that that we can...
Well, in this, in this case, since the, the construction bids for the first round were significantly higher than the available budget, we're actually dealing with some pretty substantial design changes, mostly around material choices related to the streetscape items, steel planters that were quite expensive as designed are being redesigned to be more affordable, but still fit within the same aesthetic that we're trying to achieve. So, we're dealing with some significant design changes that need to be repackaged in and, and re-put to bid, and so those design costs are part of this task order. If you give me a couple minutes, I could scroll and get you the cost that's associated with this project, but, so that's the significant cost for the rebid. The actual process itself, there's a few hundred dollars for an advertisement in the Daily Journal of Commerce, and then our bid process, all of our documents are available online, so there's really not any printing cost or any other costs associated with that, so we're strictly dealing with design costs to get us back within budget on this project.
So, that design is, that design cost is going back to the civil engineer and, and working out the different design and paying them some extra dollars to do that?
In, in, absolutely, and, and there, we're pretty clear with them that, that there's a responsibility there, that they give us a product that's affordable and achieves the same aesthetic, and so, this is not capturing all of, this task order does not capture all the costs that are associated with them getting us back within budget, but does allow for some reasonable time to repackage plans that need to be re-stamped and then re-put out for bid, and so, although there's some design costs that they're bearing, because they were responsible for bringing us an affordable project, there are some costs that we should pay for to get at the project rebid.
Good, thank you. Any other discussion? I just wanted to share with our, our last McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, we went over this process, so to keep them involved, because we were using some of our urban dollars to supplement some of the things that are happening on the Alpine area, and so, we had that discussion, they're very aware of that, and are looking forward to this new schedule, so that we can move forward from that perspective.
I do have a number for you, Alan, it looks like of the $343,000, or $345,000 task order I had before you this evening, $16,000 was the cost to repackage the plans and get it back out to bid.
Okay, thank you. Okay, hearing no further discussion, I ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Alan Rudin and seconded by Larry Yoder, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no, nay, and so this stated resolution passed unanimously six to zero. Let's move on to Resolution 2016-92, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to enter into a management contract with, who's?
Asa Abloy Entrance Systems.
Okay, for ADA doors at the library, so Jen, we'll turn time over to you to give us a report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilors. So, a little over a year ago, I believe, the quest was made to the Friends of the Library from the William and Rosadell Dickman Trust, and a subcommittee was formed among the Friends to decide what to do with some of that money, and it was decided that ADA doors were important and needed at the library, it was also something that was near and dear to Rosadell Dickman's heart, and it took a while to get the process going, but the city did receive written quotes, and the library, the Friends of the Library were planned to meet last Thursday, but then we had the weather incident, and so we actually met at noon today and officially made this decision, which is why the blanks are still there on the document, but Asa Abloy Entrance Systems is the chosen company to put in these ADA automatic doors. The Friends of the Library have agreed to pay for the cost. The Friends of the Library have agreed to pay for the cost, and so it's just a matter of the city entering into the contract.
And what is the amount, what is the cost?
The cost at this point in time is $13,916.88. That may vary a little bit as we work with the Asa Abloy.
Any discussion or questions for Jen?
Just, Jen, it's just another example, as you know, of the continuing what's good about McMinnville type atmosphere that we have here is the Friends of the Library are always coming up with these great ideas. And that would be a great benefit, having those doors there, for sure.
And two members of the Friends Board are in the audience, and thank you to them very much.
Long-term members of the board.
Correct. There will be likely some adjustments to the quote when we are talking with Asa Abloy. Getting the electrical bid and possibly an air curtain, although we're...
Is there a not-to-exceed amount that we can write into this?
Friends have agreed that the not-to-exceed amount will be $20,000.
Okay. That's what I'd like to have to be able to put into the final resolution, so the...
Not-to-exceed $20,000.
I identify myself, I'm Dwayne Bob Preston of the Friends of the Library.
Alan? Just, what was it now? Oh, is it going to be permitted by the City of McMinnville Building Department?
The Entrance Systems, they will manage the permitting process if it's needed.
Just wondering if there's any break through the Building Department on any fees. I don't know, Mike, is that something?
We've got this discussion.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Budget show game.
Okay, I will ask for a motion as this resolution has been amended. I think there's going to be some language that would be a max amount that they...
Yeah, the name of the company is?
Asa Abloy Entrance Systems. You could send that to Melissa after five.
Yeah.
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
An amount not to exceed $20,000?
An amount not to exceed $20,000.
And a move by Remy and a seconded by Kelly. All those in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This resolution has passed unanimously, six to zero. Or what?
Five to zero.
Oh, five, excuse me. All of those have been five. We're down one, okay? Wendy's out there. But we need her where she's at on the Planning Commission for just a little longer. Okay, Resolution 2016-93, a resolution approving the issuance of the certificate for the canvas of the returns of the vote cast at the general election conducted on November 8th, 2016 in regard to Measure 3681 imposing city tax on marijuana retail sales of marijuana items and the election of three city councilors and the mayor. Melissa or David, whoever?
I'll take this one.
Okay.
She's been working hard.
Absolutely.
This is Resolution 2016-93, which is a resolution approving the canvas of the votes included within your packet with the certificate, including the canvas of returns of the votes cast for Measure 36-181, which opposed city tax on marijuana retailer sale of marijuana items, as well as the election of three city councilors and mayor. Votes cast regarding Measure 36181 indicates that the measure passed by a vote of, out of 14,011 total votes, 10,417 in favor, 3,594 against. There were no overvotes and 691 undervotes. With respect to the election for Ward One City Councilor, the results indicate that Wendy Stassen's was the winner of that. With, out of total votes of 2,577, she received 2,541 votes with 36 write-in votes. For the Ward Two election for City Councilor, the results indicate that Kelly Minkie was elected for, or re-elected for the Ward Two position. Out of 3,728 total votes in Ward Two, she received 3,661 votes with 67 write-ins. For Ward Three, the results indicate that Adam Garvin won out of a total of 2,649 votes in Ward Three. He received 2,585 votes with 64 write-ins. And for the position of mayor, which was a contested position, the results indicate that Scott Hill won that position. Out of a total vote of 11,032 votes, Scott Hill received 8,248. Jared Miller received 2,615. There were 169 write-ins. So with that, we have before you the certificate indicating the passage of City Measure 36-181 and the election of Wendy Stassen's, Kelly Minkie, and Adam Garvin to the City Council for Wards One, Two, and Three respectively, and Scott Hill for mayor.
Thank you, David. Any discussions around these results? I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
I move.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Larry Yoder and seconded by Alan Rudin. All those in favor may signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signifying by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously by a vote of five to zero. And that takes us to the end of...
I will now pass this down, and I ask that all of you sign it before you leave here today under penalty of, I don't know.
Agging of your house.
Yes. That's why we had to have the legal take care of that. We, I'm just going to quickly go through our kind of advice and informational items. We do have a Urban Renewal Committee meeting after this, but any reports from our commissioners on committee or ward assignments? Go ahead, Kevin.
In your pile of stuff that's on your desk, and Larry, actually I'll have yours here. This is the invitation to the City, the Mid Vallet Valley Council, the government's annual dinner. It's going to be held at the Ole Hills Campus in Salem. It's a really beautiful building, actually looks south over the valley, it's really nice. But it's going to be dark, if you want to go and see what they can do. But encourage you to look at that and check your calendar and see if you can come. It's usually a really great, great event. And at the encouragement of the Board of Directors, they're going to kind of jazz it up a little bit and not make it so dry and boring. Because I guess we really just rocked it last time and they want to repeat that.
Absolutely, under the spruce goose, you know?
Yeah, so we were a hard act to follow, so they feel like they're going to up their game. And so I just encourage you all to attend. And I think in the next couple of days, we should be seeing the solicitation for the awards that are offered at that dinner. So if you have any projects or leaders in mind in the area to submit their names. And while I have the mic, I want to give a shout out to Mike Bissett and his team. I was driving down Cypress and I noticed that the curb was put in for that sidewalk by the elementary school. And that was, that came from a constituent who saw someone with a wheelchair, a student navigating where there was no curb entering into the sidewalk right by the elementary school. And so I talked to Mike about it and he, I don't remember when that got done, but I noticed it was done. And wasn't that maybe a couple of years ago, we had a similar situation where a constituent saw on Second Street, there was a, the crosswalk going towards the elementary school there on Second Street was on the east side of the curb rather than the west side. So people trying to leave the neighborhood, the crosswalk was in the way. We brought it up to his apartment and they moved it to the other block. And I just think it's amazing where we can communicate this with the staff and they go out and look at it and they come up with a plan to solve the problem and they're making our citizens safe. I just, I don't think I ever got to thank you for that, Mike, but I noticed it was there and I, thank you very much.
We actually used that Cypress issue with our McMinnville Works intern and she did the design for that, reconstructed that driveway in that area. So it was a great project for them.
Thanks, Mike.
Great. Any other reports for tonight? I'm just going to do a couple of, tomorrow we have our Visit McMinnville Board Meeting and we, on Thursday, are going to have our bypass meeting. Last week, we had a contingency from this area. Go and speak to Representative Suzanne Bonamici in her office, talking about looking forward to Phase One of the bypass, which becomes a critical piece that's going to take care of the flow from Springbrook all the way up to Rex Hill. And we know that she's on board, representing us in that process. And the other piece is that we know we've missed the funding for 2017, so we're focusing on 2018 with the tiger grants and the monies that might be available.
All right, well, just one little note. I got an email, you probably, maybe you didn't get it this week, that the meeting Thursday's canceled.
Oh, it is, okay. Thank you, because I did not get that. I'd be there early in the morning looking for my doughnut.
And they didn't say why, they just said it was canceled.
Okay.
Yeah, it might be weather.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, let's go department heads or reports from our departments.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update on the hiring process that we're currently undertaking for the five open positions. We have three conditional job offers out right now, which means that they're going to psychological and medical testing. We should have information back from those fairly soon. In that, in those three, there are two that have no experience and one that's a lateral, currently working lateral. So he would, assuming he passes everything, he would take effect quite rapidly rather than having to go to the academy, he would start basically right away. We also have six others in the background process. Of those six, three have no experience. One is a current, currently employed lateral applicant. Another one is a certified applicant, but he's not currently working at an agency in Oregon. And then we also have an applicant from outside of the state who just started in the process and he's in the process of getting his background packet into, so we can get going on that. So essentially, right now, we have nine people in the process with three conditional job offers and hopefully those three will turn into unconditional job offers within the next week or so.
Thanks for the update. I know that we've been waiting to hear that report, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Jen, any report from the library? Scott?
I think you're ready.
Yeah, good. Heather? Mike? Melissa? David?
All good.
And Candace?
Nothing, thank you.
We're trying to work her to death, I'll tell you. And I think we're making some progress. In your packets, also see that we have the City of McMinnville Building Division reports for the period ending November 30th. We also have a, the audited financial statements and audit letters for Visit McMinnville. If you remember our last meeting, Jeff was here and gave us a verbal report of kind of where things were, but you have that copy. With that, anything else from the council or for staff? We'll go ahead and adjourn our City Council. We now are going to open our... I get to do this one? Oh. Oh, that's all.
We're now opening the Urban Renewal Agency. So we never actually vacated the chair position when Rick left, and so I need a motion to recognize that the chair position has been vacated.
I'll second move.
You'll second move, Kelly. Anyone second that?
I'll second that.
We've got a second by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so that leaves us with an opportunity to appoint a new chair of the Urban Renewal Agency.
I'll nominate Scott Hill.
So we have a motion that Scott Hill become the new chair of the Urban Renewal Agency. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
And a second by Counselor Minkie. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, Scott, back to you.
Okay. In front of us today, we have Resolution 2016-07, a resolution of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board authorizing the McMinnville City Manager or the designee to enter into and manage a personal services contract for the parking study with Rick Williams Consulting. And so I'm going to turn to Heather and have her update us on that.
Yes, so good evening, Chair Hill and other board members. So this is a contract with Rick Williams Consulting to look at a utilization study in both the, in the Third Street area and in the Northeast Gateway District as it pertains to parking. Rick will, then his team will come in and study parking for one day during the week and one day on the weekend to see how parking is currently being utilized. He'll then take that data and use it against existing conditions. So where are their capacity issues? Where are their capacity opportunities? And bring back some recommendations to us relative to that. He'll also use that data for future conditions. So when we look at future development that's occurring and in dialogue right now and also what the district will yield in terms of future development, he'll then make recommendations as to where we should be looking to invest or plan for future parking inventory in terms of public parking. In the Urban Renewal Plan, one of the projects is off-street public parking. There's a million dollars allocated to that. To be able to really understand where's the best place to invest for that, this is a typical study that communities undertake. This type of study hasn't happened here in McMinnville, to my knowledge. And in my short time here, parking has come up many times as a concern and anxiety for a lot of current businesses and future businesses looking at these districts. So I've worked with Rick in the past in two other communities. He and his team do excellent work. This went through the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee and is coming to you as a recommendation from them. It's a not-to-exceed contract for a little less than $35,000. And there's currently funds in the Urban Renewal Budget to fund it.
Any questions of Heather? I can tell you, we've had a robust discussion within our advisory committee and they are on board and recommended this on to move on to us and so...
I think that, I think this is fantastic. I just, I really do. We have, as you've said, parking's come up more than once. It's, it comes up constantly now and so I'm really happy to see this step in here.
And if I'm not mistaken, Heather, we've asked them to even take a look at the Alpine area as we're moving up in that direction to see inventory and what's, could be some solutions up in that area. Remy?
Yeah, they'll be looking at the whole Northeast Gateway District, including Alpine Avenue specifically, but that whole, that whole portion of the Urban Renewal District there, so.
Any further discussion?
Well, just on the million dollars, budgeted, approved. So that's, that's a number that you just came up with or is that an educational, educated guess?
So no, in the Urban Renewal Plan, there are 13 projects in there and each, each project has an authority of a certain amount of money to spend from the tax increment financing. And the off-street public parking project has a million dollars in current value dollars associated with it. It indexes with the CPI inflation based on when we decide to implement it. But that's the authority given to you as the Urban Renewal Agency in terms of the amount of money you can spend into that project unless you amend the plan.
So the consultant will give his recommendations and we've basically got a million dollars to spend for the construction or close to it? Is that how that works?
Yes, when the, when the funds are available.
And again, the Urban Renewal is 30, 30 million over 25 years, is that correct? So, and so that's how we allocated those, that 30 million in the initial plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? I'll ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
I move.
A second?
Second.
Moved by Alan Rudin, seconded by Larry Yoder. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed by saying nay? This resolution passes unanimously. We have a second resolution, 2016-8, a resolution of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board to reappoint members of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. And Heather, I'll turn over, we've got three that have come up that need to be renewed.
Yeah, so Kelly and Walt were part of the initial appointees and their terms have expired, but per the bylaws of the McMinnville Urban Renewal... expired, but per the bylaws of, of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, they are asked if they want to be reappointed, and they would like to be. Kyle was just recently appointed to fulfill and expire, to fulfill a term that became a, fill a position that became a vacancy, and that expired at the end of this year as well. And so he's interested since he just started and continuing on into his own term.
And just to let you know, Walt Gal is our current chair of our, of our advisory committee. Any discussion? Again, very committed, focused, experienced people that we're dealing with here that have a passion for doing the things that we do, the, the right people to be on the committee at this point. So I feel really comfortable that we move forward on that. So do I hear a motion?
I move.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Kelly Menke, seconded by Alan Rudin. All those in favor may signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion, or that resolution passes unanimously. Any other business that needs to come up before our, the board tonight? Not hearing, I will close our, our meeting. Again, just thank you tonight for, we went through a major, well, we have a lot to do tonight. I'm so thankful for those that I work with on the council. I mean, every single one of you are a joy to work with. Staff, you're a joy to work with. We love having you help us do what we need to do. It's been a very eventful day. And those out in the, out in the seats, you guys are here very often, so again, we appreciate all. So have a good evening, drive home safely, and we may have some winter weather tomorrow.